This conference will not be recorded.
It's not, you can turn it off. Okay. Good evening, welcome to Wednesday, December fifteenth. Meeting of the Monterey Select Board here at Town Hall in beautiful downtown Monterey. I am Steven Myers, the Chair. Justin Maycock, President.
John Leven.
So, let's just jump right into it. Okay. Oh, the old business posted YouTube videos. I was playing telephone tag with the representative at SAG. I will definitely have something for the twenty ninth, for our next meeting on the twenty ninth. New business, renewable energy, many appointments.
Here. Just want to report on our meeting last night, which was our first. We had a good turnout. There were, I think, two people who didn't show of fifteen. Two people who attended remotely, and the rest were here in the room. We had a good discussion for about an hour and a half, during which the consensus was we should wait on deciding about further appointees. We don't know each other's strengths yet. And we want to have a solid, seven-member-appointed public body sworn-in open meeting members. We will have, that will not, in our thinking, exclude any of the people who were there last night. Everybody's eager to do some work. So I was tremendously pleased. We're meeting again on Monday at six-thirty at Community Center. It's been posted with an agenda which is fairly broad, but necessarily so at the beginning. We were arranging all over the map last night. That's it.
Phil, you could...
I just didn't want to cut them off. I'll wait for it.
I said what I can say.
You can get a chair. Who picked yourself a chair? That's good. Okay, good. It's great. They seem to be a diverse number of people. Diverse type of people.
Very much so. People who bring very useful experience to the table. Diverse experience. We have potential members who have experience being employed by National Grid. We have grant writing capability and experience. We have software experience. We have town office holder experience. It's, I couldn't have hoped for a better group, and everybody's bringing something up.
Great. That sounds great. Okay, good. We'll move on. Town administrator items.
Yes, Jim.
Cody Funk?
Jim is requesting that you, as you did last year, appoint Cody Funk as a temporary seasonal highway worker at twenty-five dollars an hour from now through April of 2022. This is an unbenefited position.
And that's, what was the rate last year?
Twenty-two.
We'll just do them when we...
No, he'll be here forty hours a week. We don't have the Highway Two position filled yet, so he's going to be, he'll work forty hours plus whatever snowstorms, like he did last year.
A discussion with the board? No, not somebody in that position. I'll move to make, to appoint Cody Funk seasonal highway appointment until, what was the date?
April of 2022, please.
April of 2022. A second add? Oh, yes?
Yes.
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 Well, yes.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to make a comment about the highway department. After Sean left and we were ready to appoint Jim Hunt, I stood right here and said, that Jim has big shoes to fill. And we were approaching winter and snow, and I just wanted to let the board know that we went through our first mud season already on downtown mountain road. The ruts were deep and bad, and they dragged you all over the road and so on and so forth. Two or three days ago, they've already reworked the road with a grader very easily, not any major movement. Just some smoothing and some material, and the road is passable now. So I just wanted to get a number. At least, we're really pleased with the way things are going right now.
That's great. That's good to know. I mean, we...
And you don't come out that way, so?
Yeah, I don't want to get stuck.
Right.
No, I don't normally go out that way.
I understand that, and it's not the beaten path, but those of us who live toward the end of the road, it's a big difference just in the last week and a half, so.
That's true.
And I just want the board to know that we might be on a very good path, which is...
Feedback is great. Please make sure that Jim knows that. He's getting some good feedback. That's great. That's great. It's good to hear. Okay, so, speaking of which, Highway?
Four.
Four.
So Highway Four, when he was hired, we agreed to give him a twenty-five cent an hour raise after a three-month satisfactory review. Review was done, and Jim is actually recommending a fifty cent per hour raise.
Which would bring him to what?
That is done pretty well, and he feels for retention purposes and morale that fifty cents would go a lot further.
What, bring him to what?
That would bring him to nineteen-fifty an hour.
I can, I can understand the retention purposes, and I know inflation is going up, and pay is going up. My only concern is that, you know, when Jim took the position, he did tell us for ethics disclosure that I was his relative. I didn't, were you involved at all in the evaluation? I'm just trying to make sure we...
I was not on this one. Jim wrote it. Jim did get an ethics opinion, though, on this.
Didn't.
I was going to pull it out if you...
Is it a difference in twenty-five cents versus fifty cents? Well, I just, he acknowledged, and I mean, we acknowledge all the time that if you're, somebody's going to affect your own financial status or a relative, then usually we just check with, or call Ethics Hotline, which, as long as he's done that, I think is fine. I'm not saying it's against the law, I'm just, I'm just remembering back to when Jim took the position. Oh, no, he definitely filed his, his ethical paperwork.
He filed a disclosure of appearance of conflict as recommended by the Ethics Division.
So, I do, knowing what I'm hearing about with highway crews out there, I do agree that we should try to hold on to what we got. I understand in this particular case, you know, this person is related, but in a small town such as this, sometimes you're going to run into that. I don't have a problem with that rate personally.
No, I don't.
And it sounds like we're getting our money's worth out of, out of the of the workers, Highway Department. So, which provides though that he did file his ethical paperwork, I would move that that we include the rate. Second. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And then you'll just confirm once, okay? Well, the paperwork is properly filed. Accept police donation?
Yes, the Police Department received a two-hundred-dollar donation, as per usual. I just need you guys to accept it.
Very nice. I move that we accept the two-hundred-dollar police donation. Second. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like word overpayment.
Did I refer to the email there?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, and this is the first time I was really aware of this. I guess maybe this happened a year, I don't know, wait. That Cal Edelman received an overpayment of two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and twenty-four cents. It was a, that was direct deposited into her account, and there's been some dispute as to, the treasurer is trying to get in touch with her. Let's see if they can get it returned, and I believe Ms. Edelman's position is that she didn't receive it. So, it's just kind of a back and forth that's been left over since 2020.
Right, this was back on Base Eight, was the account on treasurer?
Right. Okay, so there was a previous, there was a previous accountant. And the treasurer had made two recommendations as to how we can handle it. One of them is to take Ms. Edelman to a small claims court, and the other one is to just go ahead and put it on the town meeting as a prior bill. In other words, just kind of eat it. So...
And the cost for option one would far exceed the two-eighty-twenty-four because Harper's payroll would also have to get involved to change the tax documents and...
So the only way to handle this deficit of two-hundred and essentially, of two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and twenty-four cents is to put it as a bill, as a bill from previous year at town at annual town meeting, right? There's no, you can't move it from some other account. That's the only way.
Well, that's what you'll be paying for with free cash.
Right, so we pay for it with monies that have already been taxed, but the town, it's a nine-tenths vote or something like this?
Yes, it'll require a nine-tenths vote.
It'll require a nine-tenths vote. So, oh listen, I make the recommendation that we do put it on the warrant for the annual town meeting, and we take it, and we take it free cash, provided that the taxpayers vote for that. Is that a motion? Yes, that's a motion. I would make that into a motion, and I go second.
Did anybody ask for the money back?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a council check? It's a direct deposit.
A direct deposit.
Yeah. So, yeah, so...
Well, why isn't the company...
Sorry?
They made the overpayment.
The company, I don't believe the company is...
Base Eight?
Base Eight.
I don't believe Base Eight is still in business.
Yeah, I don't believe Base Eight is still in business. So, it's, so, okay, so I vote. I vote yes.
I'm going to vote no.
Highway surplus equipment. Okay, so we received a letter from Mr. Hunt, the Director of Operations. He gives us a list of materials that are currently at the highway garage that he'd like to clear out of there. I understand that all these materials are going to be put out to...
Put them on municipal, yep, just an auction site, if you need the pictures that I have in here.
Okay, so we're not just throwing them away, we're going to see if we can actually get a few dollars out of them. Send them, see if we, we've all got, have you got a copy of that list? Yeah, I've got a copy of the list. The only thing that I had a question about was the basketball court tiles, because I was under the assumption that it's still belong to the nonprofit that put together the court. I've been informed that no, actually, the county's that took possession of them, legal possession of them, so it doesn't belong to the James Court, the James Court book. And they have to send your, right, with the logo?
Yeah, it's hanging up on there.
Yeah. Yes, hanging up. So, and that's never going to go back in place where, because it just became a big hazard. So, so I would, I would give, I would give Mr. Hunt the okay. I would make a motion to give Mr. Hunt the okay to put out the bid, the item named in this letter of December fourteenth. Second.
Can we, do we know what the equipment this is? I mean, if there's equipment, I don't need to know the...
Yeah, absolutely. One's a two, three yards salt sand spreader that hasn't moved in five years. One's a strike machine that also hasn't been used in five years. One's a road grading, two are, two road grading brakes, rates, excuse me, that the department doesn't use and has been sitting outside the trees going through it. A storage locker that no longer meets the NFPA standards for storage of flammable liquids. So I'm assuming that that's what was used previously. And we did receive new lockers via Grant from Maya. Fuel oil tank that was removed from the highway garage in 2019. The highway garage changed to propane, from fuel oil. Diesel generator that was, that doesn't run, it was moved from the garage in 2017. And then the basketball court tiles. So all things that are basically, we're not using them, and I think also, I think it's a good, it's a good that Jim is actually thinking about, you know...
Maybe he can raise the two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars because of the overpayment.
There you go. We could, yeah, perhaps we could make that money to do that. So, so that's what it is, and... Oh, yes?
Yes.
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 Appointment's of twelve, nine, twenty-one. So I had one change. Let me wait, hold on, hold on. Can we change paper stocks because I can't seem to... I just added that Steve and Justin signed on open meeting law response. Perfect, okay, that's fine. Okay, so I move that we accept the minutes, twelve, nine, twenty-one. Second. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, appointment form on website, is that... So, we had talked about when we were making appointments, making a form on the website, which Melissa did, thank you, Melissa. One edit I wanted to bring to the board's attention, or potential edit, would be the form asks, are you a voter? And I didn't want people to think that if they're not a voter, they can't apply for appointment. I don't believe it's an official select board policy at the moment that we only appoint voters to elected, otherwise elected seats. But I think that's a pretty practical way to deal with it, because at the next, you know, we appoint people until the next election for vacant elected seats, and they wouldn't be able to run at the time order. So, the sentence I had, or the two sentences I drafted were, to add on to this, to the form, would be the Select Board reserves appointments for vacant elected positions to residents who are registered to vote in the town of Monterey. Residents who are not registered to vote in Monterey are considered for many appointed seats. Because I didn't want people to think if they were in check to know and not a voter, they couldn't apply to anything. But... So, so I guess the only thing that I, so, wait, wait, what's the rest of it? Select Board, the appointments for vacant elected positions to residents who are registered to vote in Monterey. That's perfect. Residents who are not registered to vote in Monterey...
They're still residents.
They're still residents.
Residents who are registered to vote in Monterey may be considered for appointed seats? In other words, I just, I don't know.
It is awkward.
Doesn't read... It is awkward, and part of the reason it is, is because I thought there were some appointed bodies that we might reserve to only voters, depending. And I don't know if that's the case. If not, we could just write, residents who are not registered to vote in Monterey are considered for any appointed seats, or something like that. Well, if you just put, so if you just put maybe, so residents who are not a registered, maybe considered for appointed seats. Why not that, that doesn't have to do the same thing?
Yeah.
Maybe considered...
The only reason I... What's that, John?
Susan Cooper has it.
I, I think that Justin has a good point. I'd have to see the words written, but it doesn't make, if you're appointing a vacancy for an elected post, which happens, right? If someone steps down or is ill or whatever, it doesn't make any sense to appoint someone who is not a voter, because what, I mean, it makes the most sense to put a registered voter in that position so that they can in fact run in the next election. They may not want to, but there are other appointments where the person doesn't need to be a voter, because it's not an elected position. So it does make sense to me to have a statement that tries to make, tries to clarify which, which option is appropriate for that position. Is this an appointment letter or posting that would be for any available appointment? Could you have one for appointments to elected positions and one for appointments to non-elected positions?
Just making a general form. We're just making a general form, Susan.
Okay.
Which is one to try to do on the website, but I guess we're just trying to get language that's going to apply to both. Yes?
Why do we need to capture that information if you're a registered voter or not? Given that they can't run, they can't run...
No, so what Justin, what Justin's trying to say is they want to give, you want to give them a heads up that, hey, this is an elected, if it's an elected position and you're not, it's only for registered voters.
I think this is also more about trying to, for the people filling out the form, to let them know what we're looking for, because anyone could apply, and we can just check whether they're a registered voter or not with the clerk. But to, in the most concise and clear way possible, let people know, you know, right now there's an open seat on the planning board, and if you're not a voter in Monterey, we probably wouldn't, I don't know what the law is, but we probably wouldn't do it just as a matter of practicality, appoint someone who's not a voter to the planning board. But if we are appointing to the cultural council, we may well appoint people.
I understand that, but why can't you just make a disclaimer in there, or some sort of a statement that, instead of asking the question, are you a voter? Why don't you just make a statement that some people will be considered and some won't, depending upon the committee and so on and so forth? And you just make a general disclaimer, and that takes care of that problem.
Well, no, we want, because if we're going to get, let's say you get twenty applications for an elected position, and if somebody had checked off, I'm not a voter, had not checked their voter, then they would not, you know, then they would be not considered for that position. It just makes it easier to rank the applications for the position. If they, that's the whole point of doing the form on the website, is that we can try to collect some information, and that shows up with the, that shows up with the application, and that's one of the key things. But I think, so I think, but I believe, but Justin, you were just, but you were just trying to basically tell people, you know, if you're not registered, you can still sit on appointed positions.
Yeah.
Steve and Justin?
Say your name.
It's John Levin here. Can I speak for a moment?
Sure.
So, I'm not sure I'm clear on what the requirement is. Are you suggesting that you cannot appoint a non-voting resident to an elected board on an interim basis until the next election? Or is, or can you do that and you're just trying to discourage non-voting residents from applying because they would have to be a voting resident in order to run in the election?
It's the second one, John, or it's the second one?
Okay, so, so if that's the case, then I think that's, I'm not, I don't think that's a wise policy. We have enough trouble as it is finding people to fill positions in town, and I think that I would not rule out the possibility that someone, after having served on a board on an interim basis, would not consider it something that they would be interested in doing on a more permanent basis, and then would become a registered voter in order to run in an upcoming election. I think that you obviously have the option of calling through the applicants, and if you have a qualified applicant who's a registered voter, and you choose to select them, that's great. But if you don't have that option, I don't think you want to discourage and advance qualified people stepping up, and I know with some of the boards in particular, you're filling a seat that may have a two- or three- or four-year term remaining. And so that's a long period of time before someone has to make a decision as to whether or not they're going to run. So I would hesitate to place a limitation in the solicitation of able-bodied people in town to serve on boards.
Instead of guessing it was not legal, whether we can get the town council and get an opinion, and he can draft the...
So, I can answer a couple things. Sure, so one is that when the Bylaw Review Committee came up, we did ask town council, can we appoint people who aren't voters? And he said it's entirely up to the Select Board's discretion. We can make our own policies or decisions. We don't have to have a policy, but we can consider it. If we wanted to, we could only appoint voters to everything. To speak just to one of John's points, John Levin's points, if there is a four-year seat and it becomes vacant after the first six months, we only appoint until the next election. So there would never be an interim person appointed to an elected seat for more than a year, because that seat, and we, and we filled, like, for example, we filled a planning board seat, which may have been multiple years, or the board of health seat, we just filled, had more time left on that seat, but it's going to be up for election. So you're never going to have anyone on there for more than, for more than a year. And I also think, I want to clarify, this is not entirely to discourage people from, who aren't voters, from applying for those seats. It's also, I partially want to do it to encourage people who are not residents to know that they can still apply for many, many boards. And also, not really to encourage or discourage, but just to make people aware of the difference. I didn't want people to see, are you registered voter in Monterey? And then think if they're not, they can't, they can't apply for anything. I want them to know they still can't. But maybe this is... But maybe this is too wordy and it gets people confused, and we should just forget about that.
Maybe, maybe we can come up with like one sentence that just is encouraging, that just says, uh, I mean, I mean, obviously you have the box, are you, are you a registered voter? But, um, something, you know, something like, um, uh, both registered voters and non-registered voters are, are, are needed on our, on our, on boards and committees. Thank you for applying, or something like this. And then, you know, I mean, just something that's generally encouraging, um, but it, but there's still, you still have the box, and you do know who's, who's, who's registered and who's not registered.
What about, uh, residents who are not registered to vote in Monterey are considered for seats on appointed boards, committees, and commissions?
Perfect. That's the disclaimer that I was referring.
That's fine with me.
I'm just going to say, if it's important enough that the person has to be a registered voter to be in that position, then the preference should be given for registered voters to fill that position. And that should be made clear, that there are two people looking for that position and one is a registered voter, then they have to be given the first option.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, so the first line of, of, of words is, uh, why don't you, instead of saying the select board reserves appointments for vacant elected positions to residents, why, but the select board prioritizes appointments for vacant elected positions to residents who are registered to vote in Monterey? So we're making, we're prioritizing it, doesn't mean it doesn't exclude.
Right. But the other thing that's really going on here is, we've been forming some new, uh, bodies. And so we've now three, really. We've, we've had, it has three in the past couple of months, and that's not usual. And so especially not for elected seats, other than the bylaw review committee, which we just formed. Other than that, we've had the planning board seat open since the election. We've had, I think there's a seat on parks commission. So, since the last election. It's not like we have people coming to us all the time. So I would say, and it, it's up to the select board's discretion, so let's just leave it that way. But I would add the disclaimer below that question, residents who are not registered to vote in Monterey are considered for seats on appointed boards, committees, and commissions. Because I don't want people to stare away by checking no for that question, thinking that it won't be considered.
Okay, that's fine. All right, let's just, that's, that's, that's working. All right, you want to put that on there? And let's see how, how, um, any more discussion from the gallery?
The only, I had two other things about the appointment form.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add the disclaimer onto the form, residents who are not registered to vote in Monterey are considered for seats on appointed boards, committees, and commissions.
Second.
That would just be the whole thing.
Oh, so you're not, you're not putting the first thing about the select board, this select board reserves the.
No.
Okay, fine.
So that's my motion.
All right, good. And then we got a second from John. I go, yes.
I go, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Two, two other things. First, we had the PDF online, and then we turned it into a form, which I, I think is, is good in, in some ways. I wanted to see if we also wanted to offer the PDF. I know if someone didn't have internet to fill out the form, they also wouldn't have internet to print out the PDF. But it would make it easier, you know, if someone tells you, hey, I want to apply, but I don't have internet, you can print out the PDF for them and give it to them. So I just wanted to offer as many options as possible for people to express their interest.
Okay, is there, is, does, can there be a printable link to that? Yeah.
Right now it's a fillable form.
Right.
That comes.
Can we just do both? Is that possible, I guess? Like basically just add back what we have.
Or, or, and we just have, and we have forms here in town hall for everything else. We just print out a bunch of forms and, and say if you don't, if you don't, if you'd rather fill out a form, go and get one?
Seems complicated. You probably should just come to me and I could have figured it out and done it, and it doesn't really require a vote.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah. All right, so we're going to, we'll provide this printed form. Um, what's, is there one more? You hear something else? Okay, the, um, the next, uh, the next thing, review mail and any correspondence to be signed. So, uh, Lieutenant Monterey has received a letter from, uh, Nancy Vitelli and Adam Hines. Uh, addressed to the clerk and the chair. And, uh, when I write the, rather than you read this, or, or, or we just make it available on, on line? I, I. Sorry?
I think you should read it.
Okay. It's to the clerk and to the, um, to the modern select board. Uh, we write regarding Article Six of the Report of the Special Town Meeting held on November sixth, twenty twenty-one, which would direct the select board of the town of Monterey to petition the General Court for Special Act to establish a recall procedure for the town of Monterey in a manner set forth therein. As state legislatures representing the town of Monterey, uh, we are first to confirm that we have received this petition, which passed with a majority of vote at your special town meeting. However, it has since come to our attention that there are allegations of potential irregularities with the procedure by which this matter was placed on your town meeting warrant, leaving the validity of the vote taken in question. Given the developments surrounding this matter, and at the advice of both the House and Senate Council, we unfortunately must delay the, this legislation until the vote is confirmed to be valid. While we always strive to introduce and advance home rule petitions in a timely manner, these unusual circumstances require us to defer to the proper authorities to conduct any necessary investigations and to rule on the validity of the vote taken. Reaching this conclusion, we do so without taking a stance on the merits of the petition, nor on any other merits on any matters currently, uh, occurring within the town. Of course, we stand ready to introduce and advance any valid home rule petition that we receive. We look forward to working with you on any such petition that we receive. Thank you for your understanding, and please be in touch with any questions or concerns. Signed, Adam Hines, a state senator and Nancy Vitelli, state representative. So, um, okay.
Should we read counsel's response?
So, um, so basically what we did is we, we forwarded it on to counsel, the town council, and town councils. Counsel, uh, you want to read the counsel's response today?
No.
What? It's this one, right? Yes, because he actually responded both twice. Um, so I have, we have a response on December fourteenth, uh, from town council, Brian Riley of K P Law. Hi Melissa, I assume this means that someone, oh, okay, because we sent it, we sent it to him and then he didn't respond back, and we asked him.
Not responded.
Did he respond?
Yeah, we sent it to him and asked for him to, to comment and give advice on the steps the board needs to take to confirm that there aren't any issues with the validity of the vote, and that our legislators should proceed as such.
And the answer is, Melissa, I assume this means that someone contacted Representative Vitelli and Senator Hines and complained about the manner that this is petitioned for the board. I will give you the opinion I gave to the moderator as to the validity of the article being on the warrant, and please feel free to share it with your legislative delegation. I do not have any specific information as to the signature certification process once petitions were filed with the town clerk. There's a question, there was a question that I answered as to how many signatures were required on this petition, ten signatures for an annual town meeting, while a special town meeting requires, uh, one hundred or ten percent of the registered voters, whichever less. I recall that the ten percent figure was, is around seventy-three. It is my understanding that the article was submitted to the select board having a sufficient number of certified signatures, although some questioned that. Nonetheless, however, a quorum of select board, of the select board approved the November sixth, twenty twenty-one special town meeting warrant, that the article, that that article, uh, with that article on it, and I understand that the warrant was timely posted by a constable. In my opinion, once that posting occurred, all articles were eligible, eligible to be acted upon by the voters. The petition, had petition not had sufficient signature pursuant to, uh, Mass. General Law C thirty-nine ten, the board would have not, the board, sorry, the board would have had the discretion to ignore it. A sufficient and certified petition, petitioned article is required to be included. To the extent that any board member, um, to the extent any board member only approved, including the recall petition article on the belief that it was required to do so, I understand that, that it has a practical concern. But again, it is my opinion that the warrant being approved by the board and posted meant that all articles on it were legally before the voters on November sixth. In addition, you recall that the petition article proposed a, a recall election bylaw, when in fact it can only be established by a special act or town charter. There are dozens of these special acts on the books. I discussed this with the moderator, however, um, however, and advised him that if he was comfortable ruling that a motion to authorize the S B to submit a petition for a special act with the same proposed substantive lang, substantive language, and was, quote, "within the scope," end quote, of the article, he could do so, and he did allow it. It is the moderator's discretionary call, but in my opinion, state case law supported his decision. The Supreme Judicial Court has stated, quote, uh, "The warrant shall state..." "...the subjects to be acted upon at the meeting, and that no action shall be valid unless the subject matter thereof is contained in the warrant." This means that only this, that the subjects to be acted upon must specifically, must be sufficiently stated in the warrant to surprise voters of the nature of the matters with which the meeting is authorized to deal. It does not require that the warrant contain an accurate forecast of precise action which the meeting will take upon those subjects, uh, the town of, town of Burlington versus Dunn, creating Mass. One-six, one-two, and nine, nineteen forty-five decision. Uh, in this case, the warrant prides the voters as the one article, uh, proposed to establish a mechanism for a petition process to recall an elected provision, uh, an elected official. After a brief discussion, uh, that such process required special act rather than a bylaw, the voters deliberated over substantive text and then approved the motion. In my opinion, the moderator reasonably found the motion for a special act to be within the scope of the article. If further questions arise, please let me know. Brian, Brian W. Riley, S P R, K P Law. So, um, the, the net result of that is, and I'm reading glasses apparently, um, the net result of that is that, uh, is, is that the, uh, town council says that it was a valid article, and the townspeople, um, uh, certified, certified signatures, and then townspeople voted to, uh, move this, um, process forward. So therefore, with that in mind, um, uh, there was a letter drafted generally to the, um, to Adam Hines, the city, apprisingly, apprising them of, of this, this ruling.
And when was that done? When did you draft the letter?
I wrote it this morning.
Who said, who said that?
Melissa.
Melissa. I asked her to go ahead and write it.
No, you didn't ask me. I did it.
Perfect.
So.
Are you going to send us Brian, uh, Riley's email? Huh?
Uh, so Brian Riley's email, yes, absolutely. Let's, let's, let's.
It was sent with the agenda.
Oh, it was in the agenda. Yeah, I'm sending it.
When?
Uh, Monday, when I sent everybody the documents that go with the agenda.
Okay, let's see.
Um, okay, so, uh.
No, we go.
Well, I, what I changed with the draft letter mostly was adding more facts and documents. Uh, because I think the way that it was drafted, and I say, what we did was, you know, what we thought we did, right? And so I wanted to refer to documents, the minutes of, and the video of October, the select board meeting, the number, you know, I said we had eighty-three signatures, which falls above the seventy-three required to reach ten percent of registered voters.
You approved putting it on the warrant before any of the signatures were certified?
I don't know, somebody else did it.
Um, and I mean, I, 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 I mean, I edited a lot. I think, I only got it this morning, and I was at work all day, but I, I took some time this afternoon. Because I feel like the way I write it actually provides more facts and evidence that they can go onto. The way, you know, counsel wrote it and we said it, if, or the draft letter is kind of saying, yeah, we, we think it's legal, but of course we think it's legal because we did it. But, um, I wanted to reference, you know, if their investigator are looking into it, actual videos, minutes, numbers that they can refer to.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to, you want to read it, or?
Yeah, I can read my draft.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll hold through on, I'll see you on an email.
This letter is in response to your letter dated December eighth, twenty twenty-one, with regard to the recall action, the home rule petition. We are of the understanding that you are waiting to move forward with the legislation until the vote taken at the special town meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-one is confirmed to be valid. We want to offer you the context of the special act from our perspective and provide you with resources and contacts that might help in your investigation of the matter. After consulting with our town council, Brian Riley of K P Law, we have confirmed that the article submitted to the select board had a sufficient number of signatures certified by the town clerk and board of registrars. Any signatures in question were not certified by the town clerk. A quorum of the select board approved the November sixth, twenty twenty-one special town meeting warrant with the recall article on it at the sec, at the October twenty, twenty twenty-one meeting of the select board. The approved minutes of that meeting can be found here, and put a link to it, and the video recording of that meeting can be found here with the YouTube link. The signatures were subsequently certified by the clerk and registrars, certifying a total of eighty-three signatures, which falls above the seventy-three required to reach ten percent of our registered voters, which forced the select board to insert a citizen petition into a special town meeting warrant. Had the petition not had sufficient signatures pursuant to General Law Thirty-nine, Section ten, the board would have had the discretion to ignore it, as sufficient and certified petition articles required to be included. The warrant was timely posted by a constable. Council has advised that once that posting occurred, all articles were eligible to be acted on by the voters. The petition article proposed a recall election bylaw, but town council, Brian Riley, advised that a recall provision can only be established by special act in Monterey since we do not have a charter. Council discussed this potential amendment with the moderator, however, and advised him that whether such an amendment was within the scope of the article was a discretionary decision to be made by the moderator. The Supreme Judicial Court has stated, the quote from town of Burlington versus Dunn. In this case, the warrant included a recall bylaw, but was amended on the floor of the special town meeting to call for the select board to petition the legislator, legislature for a recall special act. After discussion that such process requires a special act rather than a bylaw, the voters deliberated over the substantive text of the recall provision, amended it, and then approved the motion. We thank you in advance for your thorough processing of this matter. Please do not hesitate to contact us should you need anything further. And I, uh, some thoughts to add at the end is, should we provide the contact information for the clerk and the moderator in case they would like to get in touch with the clerk and the moderator? And should we include documents? And should we include documents uh like the actual, I don't, I I imagine they have a petition, but the actual petition. The YouTube clip, the warrant that was posted, documents, because. In my point of view, if someone's saying they're looking into something, investigating something. You should give the documents and the people they might like to reach after, rather than just say, yeah, we think it's legal and our lawyer said it's legal.
Well, so so I I I guess that's so that's the point, so I underline, so when when I we got the letter, you know. Um in in both, two times in this in this letter from Smitty and and Adam Heinz. Um they just want confirmation that it is valid, that the vote is valid. And so I I think that it's the letter should make it very clear that um. Indeed, the vote is the vote is valid, there's not, there's not a. There's not an investigation, not none that I'm aware of. Um in the matter, the votes were certified and that I mean the the signatures were certified, the ones that were. That were in question were dropped.
It does say necessary investigation.
What? Yeah, yeah, no, it it says that, so they're saying, they're saying, tell us. You know, they. Who was it? Yeah, they're they're saying.
They defer to proper authorities to conduct unnecessary investigation and to rule on the validity of my vote taken, so I don't think. It does not read as we're asking the select board who sent us a letter. To confirm that they thought what they were doing was legal. It seems to me that.
It's to defer to proper authorities, see, the question is, who are those proper authorities?
It's not us, I can say that much. So anything.
Why do you think they copied the district attorney on this letter? They are the proper authorities, not the.
Copy of the district attorney's attorney here.
Okay, I'll defer to my.
I'll defer to the to the judge, yes.
I think it's a good one, except for one phrase. Which which sounded like a mistake. You talk about the phrase about the charter.
Yes.
Would you just read that sentence again?
In this case, the warrant included a recall, wait, sorry, I wrong sense. The petition article proposed a recall election bylaw. But town council Brian Riley advised that a recall provision can only be established by a special act in Monterey since we do not have a charter.
Yeah, that since we do not have a charter, that's wrong. And that's not what he was saying. Even if you have a charter, you still can't do anything that affects legislation uh uh elections without a special act. So if you just deleted that that little N part.
Well, and and that's not even really relevant to the matters here, that was just something actually that Riley had recognized.
But you you didn't say it was because you because you denied a special.
Well, in the selectman's handbook, if I'm not mistaken. If you go to recall provisions. I think you can. I think towns with a charter can have a recall provision without.
Only if it's part of the charter that was approved by a special act of legislature.
So they can't add one later.
Right. Yeah, I mean, John, I mean, probably.
Sorry, we'll we'll take any kind of we'll take any suggestions from anybody. No one's no one's practicing law here.
It it just seems so vague, I mean, you're you're offering all this evidence of. What happened here in the whole process and and I think as as Don said, uh it was a good letter and it's a good response. But what what's the allegation, what 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 is it that they're investigating?
Actually. As far, nobody is investigating anything. Other than my book, you would know.
It no, it it actually does, let me reread this sentence, sorry to interrupt, but it does, it does say. Get or this whole paragraph, given the, and this is from Heinz and Pigntelli. Given the recent developments surrounding this matter, and at the advice of both senate and house counsel. We unfortunately must delay filing this legislation until the vote is confirmed to be valid. While we always strive to introduce and advance home rule, home rule petitions in a timely manner. These unusual circumstances require us to defer to proper authorities. To conduct any necessary investigations and to rule on the validity of the vote taken.
Right, they don't say that the investigators are.
They don't, but they're they are looking.
And there's a reason for that, because the district attorney, criminal prosecutor.
Right.
Like the attorney general. They could prosecute somebody, somebody did something criminal in this whole context. They can't do anything about the vote or by the town meeting.
So would it make sense to reach out to the district attorney just to confirm that there's that there's. Whether there is or there is not.
That was in the newspaper, the district attorney immediately said, we don't do this.
Well, we need some kind of confirmation, I I think, to to provide to um to the state rep and state center. That if there isn't, that if there was an investigation that was closed, then it's closed, um it's uh so.
No, there wasn't, there hasn't been.
They turned down the investigation, it's not.
Well, well, where does, other than the newspaper, I would need to see, I think they would want to see some kind of. Validation of that, other than the fact that they looked in the Berkshire Eagle says this. But.
Justin, would you mind uh rereading that paragraph and I'll I'll stop you when 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 I get to the point that.
The one that I just read.
Yeah, yeah.
Pigntelli. Given the recent developments surrounding this matter.
Okay, that's number one, what recent developments, but okay, I mean, this is this is way too vague for anybody, but go ahead.
And at the advice of both senate and house counsel.
Right.
We unfortunately must delay filing this legislation until the vote is confirmed to be valid.
Okay, what does it mean to confirm that the vote be valid? I mean, it it I said, these are both very, very vague statements. And my opinion is that the board doesn't respond to this, but have your council respond to this. And get them, get your council to elicit from from these guys exactly what what's what's being discussed here, it's way too vague.
So so these.
You know, it it when I was on my way here, I was. Time for me to read my. Anybody can make any claim that they want about anything at any time, you just 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 put cards in 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 any process. It just seems that. It's way too vague for us to be able to respond in in it, and I agree, you've offered as much information as we have. Okay, and that should suffice. But it would be much nicer to know what the allegations are, and I think that the your council should be doing this for you.
I think it, well, I think it, so I you, I agree with you, the whole, a minimum town council should confirm that A, there is no. The D A is not investigating. And that on and that and that yes, D, we we vote as valid. If they if the town council vote um confirms those two things, then you supply those two things and with your letter.
Right, the letter should go to the town council, say, you know, here it is, here's all the information, it's sent to Heinz and to Smitty, these are politicians, they they.
So that letter does, so this letter is, when we ask council about this letter.
This is to the town, this is to the council.
This is council's response.
Oh, I thought you were responding to these guys.
And.
Okay.
We could include council's response as an attachment to our letter.
I think that's great.
But it's, you know, directed to Melissa and not directed to him.
Right, so that's why we didn't have it.
And I adapt, or it was initially adapted by Melissa into her draft letter, and I adapted what he says in here into my draft letter. But also included more facts and documents because, like I said. Of course, we thought it was legal, because we had council at special time meeting who voted on this. Council, I don't remember council wrote the letter to Heinz and Pigntelli, but he pulled this to write a letter to Heinz and Pigntelli. Of course, when you do something, you're gonna claim that it's legal. All we can do at this point is just. Uh provide the right people with the facts, right?
Justin, I I agree with you, what I what. What I didn't know when you read your response was that it was addressed to your council and not to Smitty and Heinz.
No, it was addressed to Smitty and Heinz.
Well, I think it should be addressed to your council. And I think it should go to your council so your council can can take the fight on, because you you have no standing to take this fight on.
Yeah, I mean, Smitty and Heinz aren't asking us, what do you guys think?
But I I understand.
They're not.
But you you want your attorney to tell them.
They're 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 saying.
What what are the charges? Basically, what are the charges?
They're saying, tell me valid, confirm to be valid and confirm to me that it's valid.
And I would say, if I was the attorney, what does that mean? What what do you want me to do to confirm other than all all the data we just gave you?
Justin, that's why I.
No, no, I I I agree with that, okay, but I think it should come from the attorney and not from the board.
May I have permission to contact town council and just see if I can get him to draft a to to draft a letter comprising their answer and also. Just making just making the point that it's valid and confirming that there is whether there is or there is not an investigation, something would be able to.
Yeah, and I mean, that's kind of what he did. I would argue that what Riley left out of his. Email was more. Actual information, like, for example. If they want evidence that the select board voted in an open meeting, a quorum of the select board voted to put that on the warrant. They can refer to our minutes and the video of that meeting, if they want. Um to look at the actual petition, we have that certified by the registrar, right? That's. Um.
I I.
I feel like all you can do is provide a timeline of.
Sure, but we also want to answer the the very, the very, the only question, since they did copy off to the A. Right, because I think we all want to know. But.
Ask council to confirm. That no entity to whom a complaint has been made has the power. To set aside the vote. Ask him that question and he will confirm to you that that is so. That's what makes this so crazy. These two gentlemen, wonderful representatives, reacted emotionally to phone calls and letters. We go to state agencies that wrote to uh. D A and all this up, your lawyer can say to Smitty and Adam. That the entities to whom complaints have been made do not have the authority to review and overturn your decision. Ask them if they will say that, I think they'll find it good.
Justin, I I I don't want to uh misunderstanding, I think your letter is a great letter, I just think that it should be. Tell your attorney to include all this information when he responds to Heinz and and Pigntelli.
Well, I think Justin's already included it all, I would just attach a copy of there.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm gonna drop a separate letter that will attach to Justin's letter, basically, so they'll they'll it'll be one another thing that will be delivered to them.
I think Heinz and Pigntelli also probably left it vague on purpose, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, so.
Oh, yeah.
Uh what, I mean, all we we have, you know, and they said. Any necessary investigations and, you know, I I don't I don't.
Right, so if if we just get the confirmation that they're all, and they're investigated from the from these.
Wouldn't you think that they would have had to prove that there is an investigation?
Right, so I just, you know, for the board's own education, we need to find out if there's anything going on with the.
I think you. Send Justin's letter just as it is, includes the lawyer's letter as it as an attachment. But in the meantime, contact them, ask the question.
So the lawyer's the lawyer's letter.
See if they will write a letter.
At a minimum, that lawyer's letter needs to be drafted, adjusted so it's not high Melissa. Um it it I mean, it's to whom it may concern. You know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a proper.
Well, you would include the whole email, I mean, it shows that the board asked. The chair asked me to forward this to you and request a comment for your meeting, so he responding to me.
I don't, the other thing is.
So could we print out, all right, well, I've got, we got an email, Justin's, that's better, so let's, so let's. Let's. Hopefully, we'll be in a position to vote on something on the twenty ninth.
I can't, what'd you say?
Said hopefully we'll be able to vote on something on the twenty ninth.
Why didn't you vote tonight, you wrote perfectly good letter? What are you? You send Justin's letter is perfect, you attach the lawyer's letter to it. Send that to Smitty, you can do that tonight.
The one change to my my version of the letter, though, would be the the charter. Charter, because it doesn't, frankly, doesn't even relate. In this case, the warrant included a recall bylaw, but was amended on the floor of special time meeting to call for the select board to petition the like. Now, I read the wrong sentence every time. The petition article proposed a recall election bylaw, but town council Brian Riley advised that a recall provision can only be established by special act in Monterey in the sentence.
The other thing is, is it, is it, um you said that the um that the the um. The 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 petition forced the select board to.
Um.
Use the word forced.
So that sentence is, the signatures were subsequently certified by the clerk and registrar, certifying a total of eighty three signatures, which falls above the seventy three required to reach ten percent. Of our registered voters. Which forces the select board to insert a citizen petition into a special town meeting.
That's one I would try.
All right.
One.
Is there's another, there's another word that's a little.
Which wow.
It's absolutely true.
Obligate.
Obligator or.
Yes, you, yes, you, the the legislation says.
From my understanding, I I like obligated more than forced, it's just.
Also, I think Heinz and Pigntelli know how town meeting government works, I would imagine.
I would hope so.
So. I included that mostly to include the numbers of eighty three and seventy three.
Okay.
Um, and then the other thing is.
You missed one number, two numbers, the sixty nine eleven vote. Which is quite compelling.
It's a sixty eight to eleven.
Sixty eight to eleven, I'm sorry, it was eighty six percent, but that doesn't make any difference.
That was our original letter to them with the petition.
It's a perfect letter.
Fine, okay, so.
The only other thing is I didn't have a a link for the minutes, but I do think it would be good to include the minutes of the October twentieth meeting.
Why do you just include the actual minutes?
Yeah, I didn't have, but um. And this video. Um. And.
You see, Smitty and Heinz are gonna say, it's out of our hands, you can write to us all day and all night. It's in who's ever investigating and we.
Well, the thing is that that.
They're not gonna say.
It's it's there, it's there. You know, they, both the senate and and the and the house have their own council that do the review prior to moving it forward. So um so if part of that letter says, it's under, our council is saying that, we want to do it.
I understand, they're hiding.
So if if we have a letter from council. Then maybe they're they will make their council feel more.
And that's what I was suggesting.
Was a copy of the warrant. And a copy of the citizen's petition that we received included in the initial letter to Heinz and Pigntelli.
Yeah, we 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 sent a certified copy, a stamped copy of the of the warrant.
And what about town meeting minutes? Yeah, I mean, I just didn't, I just. My point just being, are we just gonna say what we. Did was legal, because obviously, when you do things, you do them because you think you think they're legal, or just give them the documents. And potentially, it, the contact information for people they may want to contact, like the town clerk or the moderator. They have our contact information, anyone who is involved, because. They can find it.
Well, I I I see a moderator's information is, I mean, it's a moderator's that. I mean, ultimately presented in terms of the townspeople.
Well, the warrant requires that it be presented hard. Well, the warrant requires that it be presented hard at the town meeting, right?
How about something?
Okay. Um, the one thing is, second paragraph, the sentence that says, the approved minutes of the meeting can be, they said found here link, but the approved minutes of that meeting are enclosed, are attached, and the video recording of that meeting can be found here with the YouTube link. Um, but maybe it should read, the approved minutes of that meeting can be found enclosed or something like that.
Or enclosed.
Or. And the beginning of the sentence before that, the A is not capitalized?
They're bringing up the copies. I gotta start bringing arguments to these meetings.
And the sentence for that recall article on it, I think there should be a period after that, before council.
And which one?
A quorum of the select board approved, second paragraph, third sentence.
Yep.
Um, or fourth sentence, there's, I think there's just a missing period with the recall article on it, period, council. No?
Okay.
Right?
Any other changes before?
Um, for enclosed documents, it's the minutes, the signed citizen's petition. The town council's opinion refers to the email, right?
Yep, let me see email opinion.
What?
Can we say email opinion?
Yeah, sure. Um, then I was also thinking, and it sounds like already sent, but the the posted warrant.
The minutes would be probably better because they're certified by the clerk of.
The minutes of town meeting, but I think also the warrant because they said in their letter, right, Hines and them said in their letter, um, we write to confirm uh, I see allegations of the potential irregularities with the procedure by which this matter is placed on your town meeting warrant. So that's why I refer to the minutes of the October twentieth meeting, the video of the October twentieth meeting and the warrants. Because actually, there's really not that much of a focus here on what happened at special town meeting. I mean, it is vague, but it's more about by which it was placed on the warrant, which happened on October. On the.
Any more changes?
This first sentence in second paragraph is kind of clunky. After consulting with our town council, Brian Riley of K P Law, so maybe we get rid of of.
It's right, our town council um has confirmed that. We can do that. Our town council, Brian Riley of K P Law, has confirmed that the article submitted, the select board has sufficient number of signature.
Sure, I like putting his name in there because.
Yeah, also, we're putting a name. I'm just saying, instead of after, instead of after consulting with our town council, you just get the after consulting with begin begins our, capital our, town council Brian Riley of K P Law, and then and then has, instead of we have, has confirmed that the article submitted to the select board has sufficient number of of. So you understand where I'm going with that?
Yeah.
It's right, we always begin paragraphs with the, it was a ruler, he began paragraph, we have this, the first sentence of every paragraph does get stated enough of what you're talking about.
Well, Melissa's out. I thought last week's meeting was scheduled for Monday the sixth. Would that change?
We met on Monday the sixth, but at.
At noon.
Noon.
And then you met again on the ninth?
No.
You go to.
Okay, did it.
We um. We met Monday and Thursday.
Yeah.
Oh, so you did meet Thursday.
Yeah, we had, at noon. Monday was at.
Six, four, six.
Trying to keep you guessing, even.
So just vote on it and then sign.
Oh, okay.
I want to read through.
I did a problem in the second paragraph.
There's a sentence that says, at the October twentieth, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one meeting of the select board, period.
Okay. Not comma?
No, I mean, there there's something, there's a a chunk missing.
Uh, this was approved?
Uh, at the, it, what that is, is that goes two sentences up to at the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the select board, comma, a quorum.
Oh, okay. See that, Melissa?
I see that, yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes that.
Um, I think council has advised that once that posting occurred, all articles were eligible to be acted on by the voters. I think that should go after the warrant was timely posted by a constable because that's what the posting is referring to, not the quorum of the select board on October twentieth, right?
Tell me where you were.
Second paragraph, fourth line, council has advised that once that posting occurred, all articles were eligible to be acted on by the voters. I would move that to the very end of the paragraph. And also the warrant was timely posted by the constable. And also. The warrant was properly posted by a constable. Right? That's what we're getting at. I mean, time. At the corner of Swan Road and twenty-three.
Well, we're not good.
Did you ever send Maggie Mary Gobs?
She's angry at me.
Huh?
She's angry at me.
Why? That's not good.
Call me, look up. Searching apartment listing in New York City for July of twenty twenty-two.
We're gonna see our apartment this week.
You're gonna drive yourself crazy. I mean, it's.
I know, but we can pass some very big things in this read through, like sentences that don't make any sense, so I'm, there's no, I'm not, there's no sense in signing something that is nonsense.
You wanna, maybe Melissa, you want to print it out?
Yeah, print it.
I think like make another copy, let's make another, just print it out again with the changes we just made and then, because you're writing out, you're reading stuff, you're reading the, right now, imperfect.
Why?
And that's, and then the problem with that is also because you read it too, too much. The words get stuck in your brain and you're not reading what you're actually written on the page. Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, um. It's fine.
But you haven't had it.
No, I was just, I was, I was just clarifying, I was just, I, the only thing that I had was, but I I was just trying to reclarify something, but it may not be important. Uh, the first paragraph, this letter is in response to your letter dated, so if we are of the uncertainty, you're willing to move forward with the legislation until the vote taken at special, at the special town meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-one is confirmed to be valid. I just stuck in there, we believe it is very hit. Um, and then and then beginning the next sentence, to wit, we want to offer you the context of the special act, but it's not, it's not important, it's not, it's not. And that was it, that was the other, well, other than that, I also had, I had underlined, were not certified by the town clerk, signatures and questions, or any signatures and questions were not certified by the town clerk. I felt we should underline that because that's the most salient point of this whole thing is that they wouldn't, the, any, any of the signatures that were questioned were not certified. But that was, but that's me there hearing all the other.
Concerned, you wrote on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything changes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The the only change I have is in the enclosed documents, is it the signed petition certified by the town clerk? Because the comma makes it hard to read, and if we are gonna do the comma there, maybe we do semicolonous elsewhere to make the list.
I'll just take the comma out.
Listen, I don't know if you remember the, oh, you weren't doing around for the, you drafted the whole fiber optics R F P one time at a, at a meeting. Painful. This is nothing. Well, I get it right, get it right. My first game, actually. That should have been, I'm sorry.
Well, that's why when you set it up, I'm gonna edit it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, when I.
So you're good? I can give you the copy system?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you gotta vote first?
And that was the one, the one that you gave me with the Hines.
Right, you each had, one had Smitty and one had.
Right, I had the Hines one, so it's.
We hit the Hines. Well, but it, we want to make those changes.
So why don't you vote while I'm on?
Judge, be careful on our road going home, Tony. It's all black ice.
There's gonna be sixty degrees tomorrow.
What range, right?
Did you vote?
Where you came from? Came from New York?
Used to live along the line.
Where?
Plankton. Plankton.
My first girlfriend came from Plankton. I don't, um, what's that, Big Spook?
Whole country, real.
You're one of the whole country?
Why you don't?
Read the letter, make a motion.
What's that?
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion to what is it? Send this letter that is drafted here to uh Hines and Smitty Piggy Kelly.
I second that? All in favor? I?
Yes.
No.
John, the people at the town meetings voted for this sixty-eight to eleven. Why are you not supporting the vote of the town meeting?
Because, Don, people can explain things to you, but no one can make you understand. And it's obvious. You don't understand what's happening.
Perhaps you're right, but why don't you explain to all the other people in town who will look forward to hearing your explanation? I missed what you said, John. So why are you not?
Oh, hang on. I don't know why this switched. It like totally switched the camera and.
And the audio. Yeah, hang on, it's not, it, it totally booted me off the, um, the owl. Yeah.
Is it, is it working, is the owl working?
Can you hear us now, Susan? Okay. Good, now.
So John, please explain why you were going against the town meeting.
Don isn't the only one who would like to know the answer to that, John Wengold, Mr. Wengold, we, we would really like to understand why you oppose. Sorry, Susan Cooper.
Hey, Susan, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm not muted anymore. Hmm.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what to do.
And you, you cannot hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, somebody can hear me.
I can, but it's going to boot everybody off. So I can either unplug the owl and go back to the.
Perhaps Nancy could ask Mr. Wengold, maybe they will hear you, why he is refusing to sign what the voters want.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I don't know if they can.
Yeah, wait.
Okay, now we can hear you, Susan, go ahead.
I wouldn't, I agree with Don, I would like to hear from Mr. Wengold, why he is refusing to support the will of the voters of Monterey? To pass something that would allow recall, and it. He's clearly opposed, but it's unclear why.
I'm opposed to sending the letter because you don't understand what they're saying. And I can't make you understand, and I can't make Justin understand. This was supposed to be presented to the proper authorities for investigation into the irregularities. And the proper investigating authority is the district attorney's office. So begging and pleading and saying that it was all voted for, you know, it's, it's a, it's a exercise in futility. And it's. So that's my justification. I don't have to justify to one voter, who's got an axe to grind with me about anything that I do, okay, Susan?
I have no.
Someone who cares.
Mr. Wengold, I have. Many people have the right to ask why you do something. As far as I understand, the attorney general does not oversee the election process, so I don't even think they're the correct authority.
May I speak, please? Susan, um, that document, which is the recall, has a policy and procedure of how it's presented. And it's sent to the election officials, and it was defaced in three different ways, which doesn't make it valid, it also wasn't filed properly. So the district attorney needs to investigate that. That's why it was refused by our legislature, not just what happened at town meeting. So voting for it at town meeting does not supersede a document that has been defaced. And in the words of the lawyer, they felt that this article was improper, and you could pull up an email and ask Justin for it, that he, they felt it should have been passed over at town meeting. That's a public record, so you can ask for that, Susan, as well.
Isn't it the secretary of state that oversees elections, though, not the AG?
No, the AG will oversee the recall. And how it's all been done, and if it's done properly, and if the document has been defaced or not, which Ellen Colbert admitted, and the town administrator admitted. And there's a questionable signature from Ken Basler's wife. So the document may not be viewed as done properly by the AG's office. And if you deface that kind of document, there's actually legal record. That's all I'm saying. Why would you be okay with a document not being done properly?
I think it's, I, I don't know that we need to have this conversation in the public meetings, since, but I'm happy to do so. I don't, can you still hear me? Wait, Nancy, I can hear you.
I'm saying, you are calling John out, and you don't want to talk about the real reason why there's a problem. Why are you okay with a document not being, being done properly, and signatures being written in, or crossed off, or some signing for someone else? And also the documents not being filed properly? Why is that okay?
Okay, first of all, I don't think it's okay. Second of all, I think that if 83 people were correctly certified.
Spent quite a bit of time in the town clerk's office.
And that is more than is required. Then I think even if there were some signatures that were improper or were crossed off, to say if any signature was improper, that invalidates everyone's signature, isn't logical to me. Now, the other concerns, I, you asked me, I'm answering. The other concerns may be valid.
I didn't make up the law, the AG makes up the law, the election officials make up the law, that is the law.
However, I'm not sure you're correct that it's the attorney general.
I don't know if they can hear us.
All right.
We'll talk to the officials in the AG if you want for clarification, but it doesn't make it right.
Just make a motion. Yes, I'm muting everybody. Okay, make your motion. Would you?
No, well, I have another, uh, my business to deal with, the select board business.
Is it the silver thing, is it's not on there, it's going on the 29th because we didn't get it in time?
It's, it's a, we have any correspondence to be dealt with on the agenda. And I had a draft response to. That I sent the board.
The draft response is something that has not been discussed at all, being, couldn't make it on the agenda.
Right.
On the agenda, and we're loose about this sometimes, and but apparently not, on the agenda, which of course is disappearing from me. Here's the gentleman, it says, review mail at any correspondence to be sent, sign, review mail.
Rip it, it lists it below, let, the mail to review is the letter from Hines and Smitty Pignotelli.
Yeah, the, 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 the thing you want to discuss was not received, and was not received in enough time to put it on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
So how long do you have to respond to an open meeting?
You have 14 days, and if we're not going to make it, I can ask for an extension, and I can explain that we're not meeting in that timeframe. But I think it was received Tuesday, was it, or Monday? We still fit within the 14 business days.
I was not able to make the last meeting. But I haven't heard anything about this investigation that's going on, and I'd like to know if it's going to happen in this spot.
Which I would like to know too, because I have yet to be contacted for any interviews.
Everything, every communication I've sent or seen has all been, maybe you've received it all. All right, so, so I'm, I'm taking it through that none of, so, so. We did, we did engage some, we did sign an engagement letter, okay? We did give them some of the documentation, or the, most of the documentation, we had a list of, of names and, and contact numbers. And that C, and we did receive a verbatim, the response from them saying, I got it.
Probably, they won't start till after the year, I guess.
I would probably think so too.
You have a list of names, addresses and contact information made referred to, are the complainants, anybody who's, who's received, who's receiving, or when the subject of the complaint. A complaint to, oh, a complaint between his employee and.
Between employees.
Between employees. So for instance, I just want, I just, my own clarification, there was a complaint filed incorrectly and probably illegally, filed against me to the board, like Terry Warford. Is that the kind of complaint that's going to be investigated?
So I believe that if that complaint itself is going to be investigated, then as a subject of that complaint, you, you, you contact it, that's the best. If that complaint is being investigated. Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, I, I would, I would, I would firmly believe that investigators can get both sides of whatever it is, so. So then, and that's part of the investigation, you know, each other. But I think, I, I have to agree with Don, it sounds like, you know, they're not.
No, I just want to know if we, if we have an agreement, if we're going to move on.
Look, they have a whole lot of material to read, then they have to work out a plan.
No, but Don, that's what I was asking. That's what, that's what I was asking, I just want to know where we are. I, I, I'm not pushing for anything, I just want to know if we're moving forward.
So it is, it is now in the hands of the investigator, as far as the timeline is concerned. I know that that could be frustrating, everybody would like to get, I think, to move on. But, but right now, it's, it's in the hands of the investigator.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Then I'd like to make a question to the second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.